All right, so on our agenda, we had a 6:40 PM hearing, which was a continuation of the town of Whately's application for a special permit to build a booster pump station. But the applicant has requested a continuance until our August 5th meeting. So we will hear it on August 5th.
We have two minutes to go before we can start the seven.
Okay, great.
This is Jared Glensburger, just saying that I'm here.
Yes, we can see you. Those virtual backgrounds are so wild.
It disappeared?
You did. You walk away and you, it's like you're a ghost.
Well, I know I disappeared, but did the background disappear?
No, 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 no. One minute to go.
This might be a good time for me to mention to people that if you want to speak, would you please identify yourselves for the minutes? Sometimes you can't always tell who's here from the labels on the connections.
Yes, and if you do want to speak, you want to remember to unmute. But I'll remind you if you don't. Okay, it is seven o'clock.
All right, Mary, do you want to read the legal notice?
He right with you.
Sorry. I was set up for another one. I'm gonna have to shrink my. I'll collect it. From my file.
I can maybe bring up the legal notices if you want. Would that help?
Now that I'm into my computer, I can get it.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, this notice was written for June 3rd. So that's what's in it, but then we continued it. So we have a notice that reads, "Notice hereby given that the zoning board of the fields of Whately will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 3rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. The hearing will take place virtually via Zoom. The rules of decorum for a public hearing remain in effect, and the chairperson will seek comments from the public when appropriate to do so. On April 15th, 2021, Sam Hamer applied for a special permit on behalf of Debilitating Medical Conditions Treatment Centers, Incorporated, to become a marijuana manufacturer and process cannabis at an existing engine repair shop at Three River Road in the AR1 zone. Application for the special permit is to be considered under the provisions of the Whately zoning bylaws as provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A. This notice is also published electronically on www-recorded.com-public-notices and www.masspublicnotices.org. And there follows the access code information for joining this meeting by computer or by telephone. Signed Roger P. Lipton, Chair, Zoning Board of Appeals. And it ran in the Greenfield Recorder on May 20th and the 27th."
You're on behalf of the petitioner.
Great. Hello, I'm Chris Chamberlain. I'm a civil engineer with Berkshire Design Group, here representing Debilitating Medical Condition Treatment Centers, which from now on we'll refer to as DMCTC. And also here is Jared Glensburger with DMCTC. And we are proposing a project that would create a marijuana manufacturer at property at Three River Road. And critically, this is a special permit that would seek to convert an existing non-conforming use, that being an auto repair shop in the AR1 zone, into a different non-conforming use. And I'm going to provide an overview of the project, and then I'm happy to take questions.
First question.
Yes.
Do you have any issues with the legal notice and the way it was written?
We do not.
And let me ask you this. DMCT, is that the name that you're also using for your CCC application?
Jared, I think it's best to confirm that, but I believe that it is.
Yes, Debilitating Medical Condition Singular Treatment Centers, Inc. We acknowledge that it is a mouthful, and at some point in the future, we hope to change that name, but that is the current name for the entity that's applied for the license.
Okay, and then it says Sam Hammer applied for the special permit on your behalf. Who's Sam?
So the entity Debilitating Medical Condition Treatment Centers, Inc. went through a, he's another manager that's part of this entity. And he, at that time, was authorized to sign this application, and I'm here representing the entity.
And now the.
Sorry, that question was a little garbled.
The property owner, the place is familiar to many of us who've taken our lawnmowers there. But what's the official name of the property owner?
The property owners are AI Anis and Carol Anis.
And do you have a legal agreement with them?
We do, yes.
And what type of agreement is that?
We have both an LOI and a lease and a purchase option.
Letter of intent, a lease, and a purchase option.
Yep.
So at some point following this hearing, we'd like to see, and you can redact confidential information, but we'd like to see a signed, fully signed version of whatever is the best of those three leases. Is currently in effect?
The, yep, so we have a signed LOI and a signed lease, and the purchase option is a component of the lease.
Yes, why don't you guys copy of, why don't you guys copy of all three? And you can redact price information.
Yeah, it's really just two documents. The purchase option is a feature of the lease itself. But yes, I will, I will redact the commercial information and send the kind of the high level terms showing that we have control of the site.
Excellent. Okay, so Chris, the floor is yours.
Sure, and then just one other caveat to the land agreement is that the property is being leased by a separate legal entity that's affiliated with DMCTC, which is known as MidcoCHY. Actually, Jared, you better give the official name of it.
Yeah, so the, there is a, as with many of these cannabis enterprises, there's separation between the property holding company and the licensed entity. And so we're structured in a very similar way. I think you'll have seen it with Cana Select and others that have come to Whately for this purpose. And so the entity that has signed the document, signed a back agreement with the licensed owning entity, and we can provide that as well.
Well, I want to caution you right now that when the CCC sends us a request to confirm that whoever's on their roster as their applicant has received proper permits from our boards in town. If we have, if we don't recognize that name on the CCC roster, we're not going to say yes, that we've given a permit to that.
Fully, yep, fully aware of that. It is Debilitating Medical Condition Treatment Centers, Inc. That's applying for the special permit, and it is DMCTC, that same entity that's applying for the state license.
All right, yeah, so send those along. We'll take a look at it and appreciate it.
Great. Yep, thank you.
We will be sure to do that. Okay, and if I could be made a co-host to share my screen, I do have graphics of the plans that will help discuss the project.
You are co-host.
Great.
Is this Chris?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Good, so to, for orientation purposes, we are located here on River Road on this parcel here, which we are referring to as Three River Road. The legal address, which was noted in the application on the butters list, is Five River Road, which is the street number associated with the existing residence on the house. Three River Road is associated with the business, the existing repair shop. And I will note that a portion of the property is located in Hatfield. There are no existing structures in Hatfield, and the building will not be expanded into there. There is some site work, which we'll discuss in a moment. And I do want to say here early on that we had reached out to the Hatfield Planning Board, and I know Stephanie is listening in, the Chair of the Hatfield Planning Board, to discuss whether that limited site work that was located on the Hatfield portion would trigger any permitting in Hatfield. As of today, we've received an opinion from Town Council over in Hatfield that, quote, "active uses that are associated with our primary use on the Three River Road site would trigger land use permitting in Hatfield." And the opinion went on to say that, at least based upon the information that the attorney was reviewing, it may be the case that an existing non-conforming use does not exist on the Hatfield property, which would be a prerequisite to convert into this new non-conforming use. We think that, you know, there is some, some evidence and discussion to be had around whether, in fact, this piece of the property has been used actively as part of the repair shop. But we're still sort of reviewing that opinion and are going to be working with Hatfield on the implications. So what that means is that one of two things will happen. Either we will need to apply for permits to allow the site work to occur on this property separate from the Whately permit process. Or if it is determined that the storage of, of equipment and to be repaired and for other uses on this property is not enough to create the existing non-conforming use on this property, then we'll have to make some adjustments to the site plan in order to conform with that. So it's another complication of this project. But we are, again, still reviewing that, that decision that we saw today to try to, what our response will be to it.
Well, two comments on that. Who's the Whately, excuse me, who's the Hatfield Town Council?
I believe.
Tom Mullen, Attorney Tom Mullen.
Okay, are you the planning board chair?
Yes, I'm Stephanie slash Chair of Hatfield Planning Board, yes.
Welcome to the Whately's ZBA.
Thank you.
All right, great. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, so as I mentioned, and then this is an aerial photo current of the site. And so the boundary of the property, which I'll show a property plan of in just a moment, is approximately here. This is an exist, the, this, both these structures are located on the same property. This is an existing single-family residence where the property owners live. And this is the CNA repair shop, which is their business, located on the same parcel. And I think it sounds like most of the board is familiar with, with that business. The existing property is in the AR1 zone. It's within 400 feet of River Road, which puts it in that zone. The proposed use, as I mentioned, is marijuana manufacturing, which is not allowed in AR1. And so what we are seeking is a special permit based on a determination of ZBA that the proposed use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. And then, as required by the bylaw, that the change would not increase the danger of groundwater pollution. And we'll discuss a little bit of that in a moment. But we do believe, in our opinion, that the proposed project clears those hurdles.
Excuse me, Chris, what was the last one you said it would not give rise to danger?
Does not increase the danger of groundwater pollution, which I.
Thank you.
Comes from the text in the bylaw. There's just that two-part determination in order to grant the special permit for the non-conforming use. And so I will flip to our plan set, which was submitted. This is a property plan of the lot. As I mentioned, the existing house and the business are both located on the lot on the Whately side of the line. What we are showing here with this dashed line in the hatching is the lease area that would be leased from the property owners to, for the use by DMCTC. The existing, the property owners would continue to live in the existing residence, and the portion of the site outside of the lease limits would remain unchanged. So they retain the house shed and some parking associated with that house.
So you're going to divide that lot in two?
So we, under the lease period of time, which is sort of the, the initial period, because there's an option, but not an obligation to purchase the property, just this portion of the property would be leased. My understanding is the option would be to purchase the entirety of the property, but Jared can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Sorry, I had to unmute. The option to purchase is the leased area.
Okay.
Not the entire area.
Sorry, say it again?
That is correct. Yeah, not the entire parcel.
And I believe that there are part provisions in the bylaw that if the land changes hands, then we need to renew the special permit at that time. So I would imagine that the exercise of that option, actually purchasing the land, would require us to come back here to review that new situation.
Do both, do both portions of the property conform to, conform to the regulations? I mean, you're talking about dividing the property now for two separate uses, residential and a, I mean, is there enough land and frontage and everything to make two lots there, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, this is where, if we were in person, I would sidebar with Jared. Unfortunately, that, that's a challenge in this Zoom. He and I had not discussed the dividing of the lot upon purchase of the property. And so there is a zoning issue with that. So what I would say is that.
Yeah.
The project that we're proposing is on leased property of a lot that will remain.
Undivided. Okay, okay.
That's, that's right, yes. And so we'd like to consider this as an undivided property. We're in conversation with Carol and AI about ways to kind of bring, if we were to execute that purchase option, and in a hypothetical, that I, I think we shouldn't contemplate now, you know, what that would look like and what, what options we would have. But for the time being, we very much anticipate operating under the lease terms with the property kept as a whole.
All right, so I think that at least simplifies it from the board's perspective. We'll treat this as a proposed lease situation.
Okay.
And so in the proposed project, we would see significant building renovation, but all to occur within the existing building footprint. I'll advance here. We can come back to that figure in a moment to show. Sorry, actually, I'll switch to the rendered version, which is a little bit friendlier to look at on the screen. And so the orange that you see here is the footprint of the existing building, which is a bit of a complicated structure that apparently was, was built over time. Associated with it is existing concrete paving and asphalt paving for the existing site. The intention is to, again, renovate the building within the existing footprint. The exterior improvements, we would retain essentially the same site on the north side of the building. On the south side, the proposal is to install a porous gravel surfacing. That's both because it helps with stormwater management and water quality, which are good things, but also so that we can meet the impermeable coverage area of the zoning requirements. And we had discussion with the planning board that permeability is the key component of that coverage measurement. And this portion of the site is to provide access to parking as well as storage for mobile refrigeration units, which we'll talk about in a moment, that are portions that are part of this proposed plan.
Where are you with the planning board in their process?
We have a hearing on Tuesday.
This is the first hearing?
Yes, we submitted, I think about the same, I must have submitted in late May, and they, their next hearing got kicked because of town meeting, I think. So yes, our first hearing's on Tuesday.
Okay.
As you can imagine, if you're familiar with the site, this project will include significant cleanup, removal of all the vehicles and equipment that are stored on the site, as well as removal of invasive species and other overgrowth in this portion of the site. And that will be replaced with landscape screening. The operation anticipates a staff of 10 to 12 employees to operate year-round. The overall plan here is that the nature of the outdoor grow operation that's been permitted at Seven River Road is such that the harvest comes in all at once. Those plants are then processed and dried, and then are ready to be sent to a manufacturing location for the extraction of oils, which is then turned into a number of different products. With the outdoor grow operations, you can imagine, a lot of volume of material comes in all at once. Whereas it's beneficial on the manufacturing side to have a steady flow of product that allows more efficiency of operation. It allows more even staffing. It allows higher caliber staffing, because you're employing year-round. And it's also better for market to not be going with all of your product all at once. And so the intention is to use refrigeration units, container-sized refrigeration units, to pick up product that has been dried at Seven River Road and bring them to Three River Road, where they would then be drawn down over the course of the full year, such that the product is exhausted by the time the next harvest comes back around. Refrigeration, then, is an important component of the operation, because the biomass that's come in from harvest has a shelf life, and it either needs to be processed in a short period of time or kept in cold storage until such time as it is processed. We did explore ways of building that into the interior of the building. If there are questions about that process, Jared's probably better than I am to discuss it. But it was just found that it was not feasible to provide the cold storage that was necessary on the interior. Additionally, carrying the, transporting the biomass over to the building would create significantly more trips back and forth, as those would have to be done in small loads to be loaded into the buildings. And so that's resulted in DMCTC's proposal to, in these, in these dashed square lines, to use mobile cold storage units that could be brought between Seven River Road and Three River Road in order to store that biomass while it waits for processing.
What is the state of the Seven River Road project? Or what stage is it in, in its permitting process?
So.
I couldn't quite hear that. I, I think it was, what's the stage of Seven River Road project?
Yes.
We are very happy to report that we anticipate final licensure as of July 15th. So that would allow us to put plants in the ground as of, as of that date.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
So as I was mentioning, 10 to 12 year-round employees. Product pickups are anticipated to be one to two times per day maximum. Those are typically occurring in small, unmarked vehicles, sprinter vans or cargo vans. The product ships light, as you may recall from, from previous similar projects. And very few visitors. This facility is secure. It's not open to the public. There are no tours. Additional. Sorry, I thought I heard someone jumping in. We will have site lighting for safety in parking areas. That would be full cutoff, dark sky compliant, pole lights on timers. There's a requirement for that safety lighting in the parking areas where employees are coming in and out. Aside from that, and the minimum required by building code, there would be no exterior lighting. There will be security cameras, as is typical with this type of facility, that will be infrared, that can operate on just the ambient light that is available in order to create a secure site. Overall, we have a multifaceted security plan that's based on those cameras, onsite staff, remote monitoring, what, what, sort of the standard operating procedures for these facilities. We are certainly happy to answer questions if there are about some of the specifics of that security plan, but obviously portions of it must remain confidential. We have met with the police department to review some of the security procedures. And at least as of that meeting, there were no comments. We anticipate that the town would require a letter from the police department verifying that they find the plan acceptable, and that we are certainly happy to pursue.
We'd like that.
I could also note that we walked the site with Chief Savini on June 2nd or 3rd, I can't recall. And with Chief Hanam on 2nd or 3rd, I can't recall again. And have been in active discussion with both departments about our plans.
And I did have something about fire department later on, but the two comments that came from the fire department is that they want to ensure that there's a Knox box for access. And was, had questions about the potential of sprinkler systems. And we confirmed for the chief that there's, this building would be sprinkled and connected to the town water supply for that, which were satisfactory answers. And again, we'll continue to review the safety plan with the fire department as, as this project hopefully moves forward.
And, and also just to note that there would be some amount of synergy between Seven River Road security infrastructure, which is immediately behind this property, and the Three River Road property, that, you know, when we have a density of kind of security infrastructure, there are benefits from, from both.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do you anticipate processing marijuana from any other source than Seven River Road?
Yeah.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
So marijuana is actually going to be trucked into the processing building from somewhere else?
At some point in the future, you know, if the economics makes sense, then that would be, that would be great. And that's something that we would like to explore. We, you know, as a, as the operator of Seven River Road, we know with certainty that we'll be able to process our own. And we'd like to explore the possibility of, of. And we'd like to explore the possibility of of processing other people's biomass as well, if we're given that opportunity.
Thank you.
So the manufacturing process itself is centered on the extraction of oils from the plant material, as I mentioned. This is a very clean laboratory like setting that this has to occur in. There's essentially pharmaceutical level testing of the product. Imagine that there's some mystery around what these sorts of facilities look like. This is not necessarily exactly the same as what would go in Three River Road, but this is a typical setup. I've been in a few different marijuana operations, mostly cultivation, but they all they are all gleaming, much like you see here. Again, much more of a laboratory than what what might be thought of when the word manufacturing gets thrown around. And obviously, as I think we all have become familiar, CCC has very high standards for testing and monitoring and security and and all of the operations that would occur inside this facility. The manufacturing process utilizes butane as a solvent in a closed loop system. So essentially what happens is that the the solvent causes the oils from the plant and biomass to leave the plant material and become suspended in the solvent, which is run through a separate process that then drops those oils out so that they can be used. The butane itself does not come out of that process. It's entirely closed loop. Except and the only time that that it is dealt with directly is when those that solvent is refreshed, where it's removed at under controlled environment. But there are no discharges from the process. There are no drains. There it's it's an entirely contained process that occurs inside these facilities.
What about odors?
So we will talk about odor control. It is certainly important. It exists. It is less than the cultivation facilities because the dried plant material has already sort of been reduced. And additionally, importantly, the biomass is going to be packaged at the cultivation facility in sealed containers and doesn't get removed from those containers until the extraction process is actually beginning. At that point, there is odor inside the building. And so the HVAC system, as as we mentioned in our application, is going to include carbon filtration scrubbers to scrub that odor before it is ventilated from the building. So as mentioned before, the the in and out traffic is primarily employees as well as delivery or pickup of product. We asked, we provided a traffic statement and estimate compared to the existing engine repair shop that there would be some increase in traffic overall, shifted away from customers and towards toward employees. Overall, not aware of any traffic issues at the site. The sightlines at the driveway are excellent in both directions. They're very long sightlines. And so we don't see any major traffic issues occurring because of this facility. And certainly, as compared to the fact that there's already a commercial establishment here. The facility would be connected to municipal water. Water use is minimal and typical of commercial operation. It's really just domestic water for bathrooms for employees. I mentioned there would also be a connection for fire protection for the sprinkler, also to the to the municipal water supply. The site is on septic. We are anticipating the need to upgrade the septic system from the existing and will be working with the health district and the board of health to permit that appropriately.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's my understanding that that property at least has some Hatfield water connection. Is it Hatfield water or Whately water?
You're right. I believe that it might.
It is partly, yeah, it's currently Hatfield and we understand if we connect to Whately water for the fire suppression for the sprinklers, that we would also need to switch over to Whately water for the for the drinking water. So we've spoken to Wayne and to Chief Hanum about about that. And so we anticipate going to Wayne to speak with about that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question going back a little to the traffic flow here. Where would the truck traffic be on this site? Where would they be entering and exiting?
So that's a good point. So there are two existing curb cuts on this site, which are separated by this island here. All of the traffic associated with Three River Road would be entering at this location. Carolyn AI would retain this driveway for their use associated with the residence. So all of it would come through this existing relatively wide driveway curb cut, which we don't anticipate needs to be expanded, although, as I mentioned, we will be adding that permeable gravel surface to access this portion of the site.
So will trucks be going to the parking lot that's on the south side of the building?
Yes, they will. And we have done the turning analysis to to show that what's needed to move those refrigeration units is able to move through this area, if that's what your next question is.
Okay, I don't see that as a problem, but what could be is trucks exiting onto River Road. I mean, if you can't get to a 90 degree angle to see traffic either way and you're only providing well 20 feet, 12 feet plus the the distance there, 20 feet to the to the edge of the road for a, I don't know what size truck you're talking about, to come at a right angle to River Road. I could see trucks pulling out without even seeing traffic going by. I think there's an issue with trucks pulling out there. Potential, I put a potential issue of trucks pulling out there because you're not at a 90 degree angle to River Road.
So what I can say is that I wouldn't want to opine off the top of my head that I'd like to assess that a little more closely and and provide a more thorough answer to it.
Okay.
We would likely have, you know, our freezer containers that approximately, you know, once a year will be going back and forth between seven and three, or actually, I guess, I can't say that with certainty. But the trucks that that generally come are not like 40 foot shipping container trucks. They're they're significantly smaller. We don't anticipate having the very, very large trucks coming to the site. It should be much, much smaller port at your truck.
But what I can say is that that we can provide an analysis of that and and like I said, give a give a detailed answer.
Okay, thanks.
And so I believe those are the those are the key points that I wanted to go over in terms of the operation, the site plan. I'm happy to go through any other portions of the plan set or or discuss any other specific items.
Well, I'm interested in the argument that you're making, which is that there's an existing nonconforming use there. So what do we know about existing use in terms of its its history and when it was established, when it became a nonconforming use? What can you tell us about that?
Jared, do you have the specific dates handy on how long the use has been there?
I do not have it on hand. I mean, I'm sure AI and Carol could furnish that, but I don't have the specific dates. I'd be happy to go back to them and furnish that.
Well, it's been decades. Bob Smith, would you know?
No, I it's been a long. Well, it would be.
Certainly been there since I moved here.
Probably in a You put up a little several three or four paragraphs together. Because if you look at section 171 dash 12, nonconforming uses, the use of any structure or land existing at the effective date of the adoption or subsequent amendment of this chapter may be continued. Or some structure or use does not conform to the provisions of this chapter. So we need to know when it was established and and measure that date against the effective date of the bylaws. The bylaws go back to what at least 1971. Or no, maybe 1963. But anyway, you got to do your homework on that. And and so, you know, pass that threshold so that we A get or get or an agreement that it is a nonconforming use. And then second half of your equation is, as you've already stated, to prove that the extension of this nonconforming use meets point A, B, C, D, N, or E, whichever one's applied. I think you know what I'm saying there.
I do, yes. Yep, so we can absolutely provide the the full history.
E is the category, I think that you're in. Will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use and that increases the danger of groundwater pollution or contamination. Right, so as you've done before, Chris, when you walk us through the marijuana portions, you got to walk us through 171 dash 12 also.
Sure. And so then, and and so the the use that we're putting this under would be service and repair shops for, I'm sorry. Well, actually, there's there's two categories that could potentially fit. There's automotive repair and servicing shops, and then there's service and repair shops for appliances, small equipment, office and household items, other similar products unless qualifying as a home occupation.
Are you asking us to say what and what AI has been doing there?
So I guess the the question being that in terms of lawn mowers and other small vehicles that may not necessarily be automobiles, as to whether that would fall under automotive repair and servicing shops.
Well, I mean, if you're if you have a preexisting nonconforming use, it might fit into any of those categories.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? It's it's its own use that was established before, perhaps, before that table of use was promulgated. So I'm not, I'm not sure you have to fit into any of those exactly.
Fair enough. I guess I was thinking about it as if we if we found that we were in one of those categories and it's listed as not allowed in zone, then that then that would be the route to show that it's nonconforming.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
But you're also saying that if it doesn't fit one of these categories, that that is equally nonconforming.
Well, it that relates to when it started versus when the bylaws were passed.
Sure.
I mean, if it start, just shake it through theoretically. If it start, if the use started after the bylaws were or some version of the bylaws were in effect and he's been operating outside of the bylaws all these years, that could be a problem. I guess the question is, did he have, did he get a building permit for that? You got to get the whole history. This, how was this place built? What was it built at? When was it built? What was it?
Yeah, I do. I do have I do have the property record.
Piece meal, but yeah, put it all together. When was it built? Why was it built? Who built it? Did it get a building permit at that time? What was the state of the bylaws at that time? And then did his business go in there first or was there some other business in it? You know, we, you know, we have some anecdotal knowledge, but we don't have any real knowledge.
Yeah, I believe the the structure is listed as, I want to say it's 1917. I'd have to go back to look at it. But I guess that doesn't necessarily declare that that's when the when the use started. So that's clarification that we'd have to make.
Bob, help, Bob, in my mind, this, these are the 1989 bylaws, correct? Yeah. And so AI's business was in existence before 89 is the year that sticks in my mind, but Roger is quite correct. The the burdens on the applicant to prove that, but the the business certainly existed before those bylaws.
Why do you say those? Why do you start there, though, Deborah?
I'm not, you know, I'm partly Roger, I'm remembering, I mean, obviously, I was the town reporter for the Gazette when these bylaws were adopted and AI's business was in existence before that.
Why you say these bylaws?
The ones, the the bylaws that we have, the table of use that was established at that time. But but I'm but I'm but I'm following what you're saying as well, that we don't have a history of this business.
Okay, but before whatever was adopted in 89 or it might have been 87, but there were earlier versions of the bylaws.
No, we actually had a town that had four ways zoning. That anything, I mean, there may have been bylaws, but and this is where I'm going to draw on Bob as the sort of our unofficial historian. It was anything, anywhere. We had very little zoning. And that's why we have establishments like the Castaways, you know, where they are. And it was, it was, it was a, it was kind of a wild west in a in a way in terms of zoning.
Well. And zoning zoning started when?
Well, we had, we had a sort of minimalist zoning, but in terms of having a an extensive bylaw with tables of use and that was really a, we got the grant from for the planner, Terry Anderson. And that started what amounted to a more professional zoning approach.
So if I can interject, if you look at the very first page of our zoning bylaw, it says history, part one. Adopted by the town of Whately at March 1, 1963. Annual town meeting ended April 25, 1987 with the annual town meeting. So you're thinking of that amendment, Deborah. I believe I even have still, I think it was a four page zoning bylaw. So I agree, it was it was minimal, but it was not non-existent either.
No, you're exactly right, Roger. And I'm glad you say it was 87. It was 87. I don't know why 89 is in my mind, but you're you're right. 87 was the year of this much more comprehensive.
Got a use that starts in 86, just as an example. Have to show that under the well, under the 63 bylaws that it was I don't know what he would show, that it wasn't allowed or was allowed. If it was allowed under the 63 bylaws, it's not nonconforming. I don't, oh, no. For the 87 bylaws. But anyway, I think fine, let's let them do the homework and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, that's entirely fair. But just to chase that one last point, because I do want to make sure we respond accurately. If if there was an anything goes by law in 1963 and then in 1987, that changed to create uses, that would be the effective date of the adoption or subsequent amendment of this chapter. So that would be the moment in this thought experiment that the use in this thought experiment that the use becomes nonconforming.
Yeah, I think you're right about that. Yeah.
So then that becomes the key date that we're, that we're working with and not necessarily 1967.
63, but yeah.
63, sorry.
Without binding ourselves, that, that seems to be a good working thesis.
Okay, could you just, just repeat the year that really counts for me, please?
Well, it's either, it's either of two things. Both should be referenced anyway. March 1, 1963. Or April 25, 1987.
What was the April date of 87? What did you say? April in the 87?
April 25.
25. Thank you.
Okay. So yes, we, we will collect the appropriate history and, and collate it into a clear statement as to why we believe that applies.
And so then now I'm looking at the marijuana section of the bylaw, 171 dash 28.6. And it does say that well, this defines marijuana product manufacturer. And then so I'm assuming that somewhere in there you'll point us to where it allows for the manufacturing of the product. So again, you'll walk us through it. So I think, yeah, we're going to be continuing this hearing. It seems like that's obvious.
Yeah, go through it.
Research on the, on the trucks entering and exiting on the nonconforming aspect. You get us the lease redacted. I don't need to cut you off if you have more to say now, but.
No, yeah. So I just, you asked the question about the, the manufacturer. Is that just, is that to ensure that we're applying the correct use? The use that we're proposing under the definition of marijuana product manufacturer?
Yes.
Question? Okay. Yeah. And so then that, that definition is an entity licensed to obtain manufacturer process and package marijuana and marijuana products to deliver to establishments and transfer marijuana project, products to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. So I believe that we, as I just described, the, the project, and as we've noted in the application, that we are receiving marijuana from a cultivator and then processing it into oil, which is itself a product, which also then gets used to create other products. And that that will be transferred to retailers and not to consumers. And then additionally, the CCC license that is being pursued for this facility is that of a marijuana product manufacturer. So we, I do believe that as to what the proposed use qualifies as, I think that to me is pretty clear. But I don't know if there's more detail that you would want to see to back that up.
I don't know what you both thinks about that, but I don't know. We well, I don't have anything more on that topic. Is anyone else on the board?
No.
We have a hand raised. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Mike Becht. I have three questions. The first of which is reiterating what Mr. Olasky said about the sight line. I've had three close calls of getting clipped coming out of that establishment because of the trees and whatnot as you look to the left looking north. The second is, I noticed the property, I should say, the county line between Hampshire and Franklin County is approximate. Is that within a foot, 10 feet, 20 feet? Because it looks awful close to the corner of the building. So if it nicks the building, then wouldn't that also possibly be a jurisdiction for Hatfield to weigh in on? And thirdly, is when they get done with processing the biomass, what happens with the, with the remnants, what they don't use? Where does that go? How is it disposed of?
Where do you live, sir?
Christian Lane. And I also own property on River Road, which would be subject to whatever increased traffic may or may not be coming our way.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Chris, do you want to answer any of those, all of those questions?
So the, the question on the vehicle movements, again, I'd, I'd like to go back and, and analyze that a little bit more closely. The town line that we have, town and county line that we're showing there is based on monuments that were located in the field. I would need to consult with my surveyor to get the precise accuracy of that line. So I don't want to say exactly at this moment, but I do know that we found at least two bounds associated with the town line. So we feel that we have that line pretty tightly. And Jared, you're probably better to discuss the end result of the biomass. I do know that under the CCC regulations, any waste cannabis must be destroyed and quote rendered unusable or some language like that.
Yep, that's exactly right. Yep. It just has to be rendered unusable. We'll, we'll mix it with the example that's people use is, you know, kitty litter or manure or something really unpleasant. And then it's stored in the secure waste management bin that itself is secured and then is taken away because at that point it is considered no longer cannabis. It's just waste.
Okay, Chris, and I didn't catch your name, but thank you very much for the answers to those questions. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for submitting those questions. I, I would also submit that, Chris, I think we are addressing some of the landscaping to make sightlines, to improve sightlines coming out of there as part of our landscape, are we not?
Yes. Again, I'll, I, I, as the engineer, I want the opportunity to make sure I've, I've got exactly the right answer that, that I intend.
Chris, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not putting you on the spot right now, but I'm just relaying some concerns that I had just to make aware that there are concerns there and just to keep everybody safe because nobody needs an accident. And with bicyclists on River Road and everything else, it is a well-traveled, traveled path.
Agreed.
Thank you very much for that. And we'd be happy if you would. I can, it would be great to get in touch with you after this. I'd love to work with you to make sure that, that bikers and pedestrians and automotive use of that, of River Road is kept as safe as possible. I don't think anybody. I, I, nobody wants to have accidents there less than us. You know, we want to be good neighbors and, and members of the community and, and anything that we can do to reduce that, we would love to, to investigate.
Well, I have a follow-up question to this gentleman concerning that property line. I'm looking at page 92, which is in section C, number seven. Marijuana establishments shall have a 50-foot setback from all property lines. Except retailers shall have a minimum 20-foot setback. So how do you deal with that when your building is on the property line? Or no, I know it's on the town line. Can you show, put that, put that back up again?
Yeah, it's on the town line. So we, I'm, I'm not a co-host anymore.
I'm giving it back to you.
Great.
There you go.
Yeah. So we would own both sides of the town line. So for zoning purpose, I believe that, for zoning purposes, that means that that would not qualify as a property line for setback.
Right. But what is the dimension from the line?
I do not have that labeled. I would have to measure that, which I can't do readily right now.
So you got to put that on your list. We have to get that measurement.
Hey, Chris, I have another. There's Fred Olasky, another comment related to the parking. I know you're trying to use existing driveway entrances to River Road, but if you thought of, you know, you're putting most of the parking on the south side of the building, but use an existing entrance. If you thought of coming straight out to River Road with everything on the south side of the building has a parking lot and a new entrance to access River Road. Because the one that's here now is more, was used for customers coming in and out of the building. And I assume your, your business there is not going to have customers coming in and out of the building routinely. So just an option, if you could think about reconfiguring the parking to be all on the south side, then you would have a direct 90-degree access to River Road.
So that is great. The, the answer is we did not explore that because we thought it was optimal to reuse the existing curb cut. It usually is, but you make an excellent point. And I think that that is well worth exploring to see if that would work.
I, I like that idea too, Chris. I think that's something worth exploring.
Was that Jared?
Yeah, sorry. That was Jared. Yeah.
What is, what is it going to be the security for this? I, I guess the building would have security, but is, is the property itself, the lease portion going to be secure in any way? As far as, I mean, fencing or, I don't know what else you put there. Landscaping, I guess you'd put around, but.
Yeah. So the, the intention is to, is not to fence the entire property. It would be monitored through cameras, avoiding any blind spots around the building so that we can see the whole thing. Jared is better to, to comment on any detail in there though.
Sure. Yeah. So the, the CCC does ask that we not discuss the, the security plan. But we have discussed what are, in a public forum, but we have discussed it with the Waitley Police Department. Certainly for the context of Seven River Road, and we have passed on that. And we will have a robust security system on, on Three River Road. And I would add that it would increase the security of the area, given that we have so much security infrastructure there.
Doing my eyeball measurement, I see one dimension of 40 feet above to the north of the closest point of the to the street line. So I'm, I'm guessing you're going to be tight with that 50-foot requirement.
Right. And actually, we did include this in the letter. I didn't highlight it while I was speaking. The existing building is less than 50 feet from the property line, which is at 50 feet is in the marijuana bylaw. It is also the general dimensional regulation for the AR1 zone. So that would be part of the existing nonconforming request that we're making. Should that be denied, I suppose that, that portion of the building could be modified to respect the 50-foot setback. But, and I apologize, that wasn't intentional. I just missed that in my initial presentation. I should have highlighted that when we were talking about the nonconformance.
So when we're talking about a nonconforming situation, you can have a nonconforming use or you can have a nonconforming structure. And it sounds like you have both here.
Correct.
Definitely want to address that in the context of when the place was built versus when the bylaws were.
Right. And particularly that piece of the building, I suppose.
Particularly that piece of the building.
Is this the, is this on the west side or the north side? Just to make sure I'm tracking.
That, that's this portion right here.
It's the east side.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just on the phone.
Oh, sorry. Yes, it's the, it's the side close, it's the, the portion of the building closest to River Road.
Right. Okay. The wooden, the wooden entranceway. I gotcha.
Oh, how about the host community agreement? You were going to submit that.
We submitted the one for Three River Road. There was some mix-up on the, for the other project for the retail.
Mary, you, you have it?
We do. Yes, we have that as well.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
He's asking if they have it.
Let me see. I've got to get back into my computers.
I do believe we submitted the HCA for Three River Road back when this application went in.
Would you be able to take the map? Is there some way I can get around looking at this map so I can get into my?
It fills the whole screen.
That's my main problem. Let's see. So looking for Three River Road. Might it have, it probably. Do you think it might have been in with something else? I don't, I mean, it wouldn't have been part of the application, would it? It probably would have happened after that. I don't have it at what I'm looking at for a list of documents. It's, there's nothing labeled that, but of course there's always narrative stuff and everything that is in with this, with the. I've got special permit applications, special permit plans. Might it have been part of either, either of those things? Legal note? List.
I would have thought that it was separate.
I'm not saying I didn't get it, but.
Right.
Venturing to email territory.
Would it be, would it be posted on the agenda? Cause I have that up. I can share the screen for that.
Probably for, maybe for the January, for the June 3rd.
I have that. I have that. Let me just. Let me.
Think it's there for tonight's meeting, but.
And this is, does anything look familiar here?
Yeah, I mean, it's possibly in that application document. It's, it was a while since that went in. Regardless, if, if it's not readily available, we certainly have it and
Okay.
Provide it.
All right. Yeah. So why don't you put that on your checklist of things to give to us?
And I, I believe it was inadvertently submitted with the 424 State Road as, as the HCA also.
Oh.
We'll make sure that it's, that it's submitted for certain.
All right. So our next meeting is August 5th meeting. Does that give me enough time for you to get your materials?
I, I would think so, yes.
I mean, of course, we're meeting next week, as you know, but I, I didn't think that was a good.
That, that would be very optimistic.
Too optimistic. All right. So Mary, we have one on August 5th, which is the pump station at 6:40. Should we put this on for 7?
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right. I've been taking notes. All right. I've been taking notes and, and we look forward to providing all of this information.
All right. Great. Well, we'll see next week, but we'll also see you August 5th.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone who's, so we do have our next hearing folks in. So anyone who wants to leave can leave from this hearing. Okay.
All right. Do we need any time or we want to just jump right in to it?
I'm good.
Okay. Our folks here for the, would have been the 7:30 hearing.
Yeah. You cannot, you can unmute.
I'm Sarah. Higas. Put in the application.
Hi Sarah. Okay. Good. Mary, whenever you're ready, read, read the legal notice for her hearing.
This also was written mentioning the June 3rd start of the hearing, but then that was moved to tonight. So the date is off a little. Legal notice zoning board of appeals town of Whately. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of Whately will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 3rd, 2021 at 7:30 PM. The hearing will take place virtually via Zoom. The rules of decorum for a public hearing remain in effect and the chairperson will seek comments from the public when appropriate to do so. And Sarah, how do you pronounce your last name?
Higas.
29, 2021, Sarah Ziegus applied for a special permit to use the former Hitchcock Brewery located at 129 Christian Lane and owned by Miss Ziegus and Louis Goldstein as a live workspace for their son. Application for the special permit is to be considered under the provisions of the Whately zoning bylaws as provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A. This notice is also published electronically on www-recorder.com-public-notices and www.masspublicnotices.org. Uh, it's followed by all the access information to join this meeting by computer or phone and signed Roger P. Lipton Chair, Zoning Board of Appeals. And it ran in the Greenfield Recorder on May 20th and 27th.
Okay, Sarah. So what we always ask the applicant is satisfied with the way that legal notice was worded?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So welcome to our board and I'm Roger Lipton, Deborah Carney, Fred Orlovsky and Kristen here? Thought she was here.
Yes, she's here.
She is. These are our five board members. Mary is our secretary. So why don't you tell us what you want to do? Uh, I do have one question first. Do you have association or did you have any association with the Hitchcock Brewery?
No, we purchased the property from them last April.
Okay. So you never had any ownership interest in them or anything like that?
No.
Okay. All right. Tell us what you want to do.
Oh, uh, we just want to turn the brewery into like a house live workspace for my son. Um, he's a musician and I don't know, we just all want to live on the same property and he's 28 as a dog. I don't know. We just, it's a nice place. Nice spot back there. It's, we don't have any use for it. It's a big building. Um, we don't want to use it for commercial. So, you know, just a residential spot where he can do his studio work out of there. And that's about it.
All right. So I understand that the building inspector had sent a letter. To you. So how did that all come about that you were interacting with the building inspector?
Well, I didn't really, we'd moved from Wisconsin where like you were talking before, it was kind of the wild west of zoning and stuff like that. So we didn't ever have to have a permit before. So I didn't realize I would have to get a zoning variance or whatever for him to stay there. I was like, oh, that's a cool building. When we bought it, I was like, you can live there. We'll renovate. You know, we'll do all that stuff. And so then the neighbor complained to the building department. And as soon as they told me, I was like, oh, okay. You know, like I'll, I'll move forward with whatever I have to do. To, you know, make it legitimate and legal and all those things. So here I am.
So he's living there now?
Well, he's like, has his stuff there, stays there sometimes, stays here, cooks, eats laundry. You know, everything's done up here. Uh, cause there's no kitchen or.
What's his name?
Jack with my last name, Higas.
Your last name. So I'm not, you know, that familiar with your property. Are others on the board familiar with it?
I am not at all.
I am.
Kristen, you're muted.
Yes, I'm familiar with it as well.
You are?
Yes. So has the building inspector issued any permits, billing permits for any work at the?
No, he says we can't do anything until we go through you guys to get the zoning changed because he said that it was commercial. So I didn't even realize it was commercial. You know, I just figured it's part of our residence. So I was confused, but you know, I'll do whatever I have to do to.
I believe we saw a lot, saw the letter. That's how I know about it. Mary, do you have that in the file?
Uh, yes. I'm just, please.
Be able to put it up?
Well, I don't know how to put it up.
Would it be, hang on, Mary, let me just grab, um, let me grab this.
It's up on my screen right now, but.
Does it look like the application or is it more a letter? You know?
It's a letter.
Okay. So let me do this then, Mary. You can, um, you can share your screen if you wish, right now.
Uh, and how do I do that?
If you go to the, go toward the bottom of your frame and you should see an icon saying share screen. But, but I don't know if, but if you're on a separate computer, um, that may not work.
What do you mean separate computer?
I mean, if she's, I mean, sometimes I have a sense that Mary may have a separate computer open and one that she's doing Zoom on.
No, I only.
No. Okay. So. Okay. Then if you go to the very bottom of your frame, you should see a share.
Now I've got the screen the right size. I can actually see the bottom of the frame. There's just shares. Just click on the little.
Yep. Click on that green share screen.
And now I've got another box that says things like, okay, maybe it's asking what I want to share. Cause.
Yes. And, and you should have a menu and maybe click on that there here.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
We're on the way.
All right.
All right. Yes. Okay.
Can you see it?
Yep. But now you need to click on it. If that, is that the Bowdrey letter?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Is that who you're talking about?
Talking about the building inspector Hawkins.
Oh, you want, I thought you wanted that one. Okay. Let me see.
Okay.
I think it's the Hawkins.
It's just, this stuff is all.
It's a 2021 letter, isn't it?
Yeah. So maybe the legal notice there, Higas? No.
Well, that's a legal notice. I don't see a.
I don't see it up there.
So, well, I'll just say that he, so Jim Hawkins sent me a letter saying that, you know, I need to file for a building permit. So I called him and he said, file for a building permit and I'll deny it. And then you, I'll refer you to the zoning board. And so I was like, okay. So I did that. And then, um, I didn't realize I had to do yet another application to the zoning board. So then he sent me another letter and he was like, why didn't you apply to the zoning board? And I was like, I thought I did. So just being unfamiliar with the process, it took me a minute to get everything in order. But as soon as I, you know, realized that I was, had done the wrong thing, I went and.
Your motivation, Sarah, but we want to see the legal letter. Why? Because we're familiar with how the building inspector writes things up and he often puts useful information in there for us. That puts us in a certain direction. Being able to put my, and I believe I saw it. Um, and I only seen it from you, Mary.
I think, Mary, Mary, if you would stop sharing your screen.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay, great. Let me just take one more look at what we've got here. Um, okay, Roger, you think you've seen it. This is all of the documentation that we have for that, that hearing. And I'm just going to take a look at the PDF just to see if that might possibly be included. And unfortunately it is not.
But there is some useful information that I saw there right off the bat.
Okay. Do you want me to, what did you?
Why don't we scroll through the whole thing and then we'll circle back to this eventually.
Okay.
Let's look at your application. Okay. Apply for a special permit. Okay. Now, where did you get, Sarah, where'd you get this category live workspace? Because that's not a, a really recognized category in our zoning bylaws.
Oh, I don't know. I just, that was what the use was. He, when he told me what to say, just to say what I intended to do with it. So he's going to live there, but he's going to have his studio space there. And I, and you live somewhere, you can just have a studio space, but.
Stairs and have a studio upstairs.
Yeah.
So.
It's not a commercial space. It's just his own personal studio.
I understand. So we, we may end up wanting to take a view of the property because the lack of familiarity with it.
Okay.
It was a little bit handcuffing us thinking about it, but downstairs. So it's a two story structure?
Mm-hmm. It's, I think originally.
Ask the questions. So it's got a bathroom and kitchen in it?
It doesn't have a kitchen. It has a bathroom. It has a septic system. It did have a bar. We took the bar out. Uh, but it, we want to put a kitchen in.
Okay.
And, and laundry hookup is the goal.
And it's physically attached to the, the house portion?
I'm sorry. The barn is not attached to our house. It's way at the back of the property.
Is this what we're talking about? A, a barn?
It is a barn that they converted into a brewery.
All right.
Okay.
Scroll down. Let's, let's see the sketches that she's got there.
That's just like a floor plan of the building.
Of the barn?
Yeah, of the barn, just showing where we would want to put the kitchen. And I wasn't sure what I was supposed to put in there, I guess.
You did an okay job. Um, we just need to understand sort of the, the facts on the ground before we start brainstorming a solution. You can't, you can't right angle that, can you, Deborah?
No, I can only make the size.
Yeah.
Just let you see. So we're looking north here. Um, I know what you want, Roger. No, I can't turn it.
All right.
Yeah, no, I can't.
So right now it's kind of just a big open space. It's with a few, uh, like those, those rooms are already there and the bathrooms are already there. And the utility room's already there. Like that's the way the walls are now. Um, and this entrance to the upstairs is outside via like a set of stairs outside.
Okay.
Probably going to want to take a view of this property, don't you think?
Definitely because I'm a little, I, I mean, the, a question I have is that are we having two residential spaces on a single lot? And is the lot going to accommodate that?
We have 10 acres.
Oh, you have 10 acres. Okay. And then we need, you know, the frontage requirements and such, but, um, it's, it, but I don't know the property at all. And so I definitely want to take a look myself.
Yeah. Now, do you really know what zone it's in?
Do I know?
Yeah.
It's residential.
Okay. Cause I thought, I heard you say commercial at one point.
Well, that they got, they must've gotten a variance to make that building commercial. They had a brewery and a pub there or whatever you call it. Like they had people coming there and a bar.
But forget about that for a minute. That Hitchcock Brewery is coming gone. In fact, they got an agricultural exemption. Apparently it was controversial. It didn't, didn't come through our board. But each piece of property in the town is in one zone or another. Many are in agricultural residential, others are in the commercial. We usually put it on the, on the one who's applying, which is you to figure out what zone you're in. Do you know what zone you're in?
No, I will have to make sure I know what's on.
If you don't know, that's a fair answer.
Yes.
I think it's probably, isn't that agricultural residential?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's AR.
All right.
I think it's AR too. It's beyond the 400 feet.
Yeah.
Just for the board's reference, we, our new improved form has a better box for zone. Cause it's universally ignored and, and then run over with the address. So.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking forward to improved applications in the future, but that's neither here. Yeah. So I think it's AR. Uh, one. And then we've got to take a look at it and that'll give us time to dig up the building inspectors' letters. I think there were two.
Were two. Yeah.
Yeah. And so what do we want to take a view, folks?
I, we're away next week, all week, but other than that, we're kind of always around or I'm around.
Saturday?
Saturday. Yeah.
Are you around Saturday, Sarah?
This Saturday, like the day after tomorrow?
Yes.
Yep.
Do 11 or 10?
Uh, 11.
11. All right. So what we're going to do is we're going to meet at your property. What's the address again?
It's 129 Christian Lane.
129 Christian. It'll be in, in more considerable session. You'll just show us around. We're not going to really ask any tough legal questions. We'll just get eyes on the property and get an understanding of. Okay. It should take 15 or 20 minutes. That's about it. And then, and then we'll reconvene. Well, are you away next week?
Just during the week, the five days, Monday through Friday.
We could do the call.
Oh, I could do a call. I could do a call. Yeah.
Well, that's where you could. Folks, do we want to do it on July 1st? Um, which is our next meeting or wait till August?
It's, I'm, I'm fine with either one.
Either one's fine with me.
Fine. Saturday was no good. Saturday, the 26th was no good.
We are doing, we are doing the view Kristen on Saturday.
At 11.
So we're now talking about whether we want to meet, uh, whether we want to reconvene on this particular hearing on our hearing on the first.
We only have one on the first.
Oh.
Which is the.
I don't know about that. Um, is, is there just? I had all this stuff together and now it's disappeared. Well.
I believe we have Chris and his group. Retail marijuana shop at the Sugarloaf Shops.
Oh my gosh, they're back. Okay. All right.
The agenda says there's only one.
Okay. I got so used to three and four.
For July 1, Bob?
Yeah. July 1 is just the, uh, public hearing on the DMCTC at 424 State Road, Sugarloaf Shops.
Yeah.
That's the only thing on the agenda.
Okay.
Is that 6:40, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Well, why don't we set this one down for 7:30?
Okay.
And then Mary.
The agenda has to be changed.
Do you have to change the agenda? Yeah. Mary, you'll have to change the agenda.
Right.
Okay. Sarah, if you follow that, we're going to view your properties Saturday. And then we'll do another Zoom conference at 7:30 on, um, first, can't believe it's July already, but it will be. And Mary, I'll work with you. You can dig up the, the building inspector letters.
We have Mr. Bajta?
Yes, I have a quick question. As a, as in a butter, they got a notice.
As a as in a butter, they got a notice to this. Am I welcome to that view as well on Saturday?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you.
But it's primarily, it's a view. It's not really a question session, but you're welcome. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lipton.
Roger, I really think I don't have that letter. I think because I was looking at the property because of another question. I had like two or three letters to the Petersons from the brewery. Era, uh, talking about their situation. But I don't, now I'm not sure if I saw this letter or not about doing the home thing.
I know I saw it. There's no guarantee that I can find it, but.
Sarah, do you have a copy of the letter?
I probably do. Uh, but I don't want to make any promises. I don't have it in front of me, but I probably do.
Well, let me know it's Saturday. Let me know it's Saturday, Sarah, if you find it. If you find it, you can make photocopies of the one or both of them. That'd be great.
Okay.
Okay. Deal.
Roger, I assume on our side visit, we want to see the uh, inside of the building as well?
Yes.
Of the bottom, yes.
Yeah.
I'm just outside, but inside as well. Okay.
Yeah, I'll just make sure I. Can you hang on for just a second? I'll just text him. He's in New York, but I'll ask him if it if it's open. Uh, let me just. We have the keys. He's got all his musical equipment in there, so he doesn't like to leave it open. I'll figure, I'll figure it out. I'll figure out how to get it unlocked. If he doesn't have them. Don't worry about it. We'll get it.
Right. So we'll conclude this meeting. You other board members have to finish on the, um.
Yes. Urban.
The Herbert matter, but I'll I'll say goodbye till Saturday.
Okay.
Okay.
Roger, before we leave this meeting, I think there was a letter from one of the Abutters. Should we be looking at that to see if we have any further uh, questions from the Abutter or or need to do something with that, or or is that something for the next meeting?
Well, was that from the gentleman who just spoke?
No, no.
We, we have a letter from the Bowdries who are neighbors to the former brewery.
Okay, hang on. Let me, let me grab it. Um.
Andrew just spoke.
Um, hang on, the Bowdries. Okay, there is.
Yeah, they were, the Bowdries were here, I think. They they may not be here anymore.
Okay, there's no letter on this.
It was on Mary's list of files. When Mary pulled up hers, there was a Bowdry letter in there, I think.
Okay, hang on one sec. Let me. Um.
Yeah, but if he's gone now.
Well, to my knowledge, they were not on our Zoom meeting this evening.
I didn't see them.
Oh.
I'm having.
So who was that man who was there?
There were, uh, the Bectas.
Bectas.
Okay, I got mixed up. Sorry, sorry.
Like Becta.
Okay.
Okay, hang on one sec. Um, there may be a. I'm gonna have to duck out and go back in. I can't seem to, oh, here, you know.
It's on Mary's lists.
It's on Mary's.
On Mary's list.
Mary's list.
Yeah, I think it's in the.
It's not on the Whately Town list.
Okay, so Mary, do you want to share the screen again?
Yep. Yep, hold on. Go back over here, reduce. Share screen. I forgot you couldn't see it anymore. Okay. Here's the Bowdry letter.
Oh, good, okay. That's, I knew I saw it somewhere. I'm so zoomed out these days. You just need to double-click it.
Uh, you can't see that?
Um. No, all I can see is your list, but I can't see the double click.
I opened it and then I made it bigger.
Okay, hang, um. Can can anyone else see it? Is it just me?
No. No, I can't.
All right, let me see if I can.
It says I'm screen, yeah, you can see the list.
Yeah, that's all. Let me just.
I had it up. Now I I closed it out again and.
Did Mary click share screen at the bottom of hers?
Yes, and it says.
Yeah, that's, that's what shared. But oh, I know what, you know what, Mary, you're gonna have, this is a PDF, isn't it? So that's gonna have to get downloaded in some, let me, hang on, let me see if I can do it. No, because I don't have, um, you would have to, you're gonna have to go in there and click open right where this is. Can you see where I am?
I'm looking at my stuff now. I gotta go back in where you are.
I know this is, I know.
I don't, Bowdry letter is highlighted in my menu because I opened it last or because you're on it, but where am I supposed to go?
You see, I don't know if you can see where my arrow is, but there's an open with a PDF icon, the Adobe icon here.
Uh, I'm not even, are you, I'm looking at my list of documents for this.
Can you?
I don't think you're there, are you?
You see it on the screen, Mary, you're, can you see this, the open letter as if you were looking and reading it?
Not at the moment, because I got rid of it. Uh, I could see it.
Get back to that point where you can see it.
Okay, um, I'm opening it now.
Okay, and then maybe try sharing your screen again at that moment.
Well, I'm, I've always been sharing the screen. Should I stop share and start it over again?
Um, let's try something else. Let's try a new share. No, I can't get in that way. Um, okay.
Double click.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very surprised I can't get this open.
Can she just read it to us?
I could. I've read longer.
Okay, let's try that.
We can go back to that. Okay, here we are. This is dated May twenty-eighth. And looks like she left it with Lynn, who sent it to me. To Whately Zoning Board of Appeals from Michael and Marion Bowdrey, Abutters to one twenty-nine Christian Lane, Whately, Mass. Following is our list of concerns due to the special permit request of Sarah Zickus and Louis Goldstein to make the barn on the back portion of their property at one twenty-nine Christian Lane into a live slash workspace for their son. One, the entrance to both properties is on a shared or co-owned driveway. This driveway continues onto a farm road that was improved for farm use. Are there limits or agreements to the use of the shared driveway? Is the farm road legal for the use of an additional residence? Two, living space. Said living space has been occupied for the last year by their son. During the COVID restrictions, several out-of-state vehicles have come and gone to visit and work with their son. Once the COVID restrictions are lifted, will the traffic increase to this residence? Three, workspace. Is the workspace going to be used as a studio for creating music? If so, will this cause additional noise and traffic twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? Traffic has been at all hours of the night, of the day and night. Four, future accessory apartments. If approved, could future apartments be added to this property? And the next paragraph says, our concerns are for ourselves and our neighbors. In the past, we were never notified by the zoning board that our prior neighbor was converting a livestock barn to a brewery. We were never notified by the zoning board that the brewery would be having tastings on Thursdays and Saturdays. Traffic coming and going to the brewer brewery was incredible. Sometimes as many as thirty cars would be speeding up and down the farm road and onto our shared driveway. Commercial delivery trucks were constant. How can we be sure that this residence and workspace won't someday be used for concerts or have multiple people living there? We never expected a busy brewery in our backyard, so we are a little concerned how our residence and workspace might morph into something bigger than imagined. We work hard to maintain our property and once loved looking out to see farming and animals roaming the pastures, but now feel our efforts are compromised by a big building used for housing and traffic. Thank you, Michael and Marion Bowdrey. And I'll certainly email this to everybody, just so you all have a copy.
Oh, that's great.
Okay, so Sarah, what you should do at the next hearing is be prepared to respond to these various neighbor concerns.
Okay.
If possible, tell us how those concerns won't come to fruition. Uh, the part you do not, the part you do not have to address is the part that says the Whately zoning board never notified him. Mary did some excellent research, and as I said at the beginning. Zoning board never had anything to do with the Hitchcock Brewery. They got in on a agricultural exemption. And so I can understand why the neighbor thinks we didn't give him notice, but it was not our um, project, if you will. We had nothing to do with it. So that's, that's nothing you have to address. Okay.
But I'll get a copy, an emailed copy of that letter so I can make my list. Yes.
Mary?
Yes, I'll send that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and also that co-owned, co-owned driveway, whatever you can give us on the legal status of that driveway would be useful.
Okay, I have it from the sale. I have the driveway agreement. Um, I also actually contacted contacted the surveyor because it, the farm road is actually on our property. Um, I don't know if that makes any difference, but I was just trying to understand myself.
It could, it could make some difference. Yeah, give us what you've got. The more is better, usually.
Okay, and just, just so that I understand. Isn't it better for it not to be commercial and go back to residential, or it just, it's a moot point? And it's just a totally different thing.
I would say it's better to be residential and not commercial. As I hear the neighbor's fears, he's afraid that under the guise of being quote-unquote residential, you'll sneak in aspects that are more similar to commercial use.
Right. Not going to, but I'll address all those questions.
Eric, could you just give me your email, please?
Sure, it's my name. Sarah Higginson at gmail dot com.
Eric, is that Sarah with an H or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Roger, Roger, since the application talks about, uh, what, use workspace? Do we need to, or do they need to be clear what they're asking for? Because we don't have any such designation.
Well.
Use is, use is one thing, and then if whatever we decide on, shouldn't we then decide on whether it's allowable workspace or what kind of work activity would be allowed there?
Yeah, I think next time what we'll have to do is just go through the, what is allowed and under the bylaw as possible. Uh, I think Deborah mentioned it, that is in this creation of a second structure on on a single lot. So. Yeah, I mean, if it's not allowed.
I mean, if, just, just so that I can wrap my head around this, if, if, say, we took my son out of it and we bought this property and I wanted that to be my pottery studio, there would be no zoning anything because, but that's my live workspace. But that falls under, if I live here, I can also work from home, right?
You can, but if you start putting kitchens and bathrooms in a separate structure.
No, I understand that part.
Yeah, but no.
Work part.
Right, you can certainly work in any space on your property, but once you start putting livable aspects to it, kitchens, bathrooms, you suddenly create two residences on a single lot.
Right, I I totally, I totally understand that part and that I need zoning to say that that's okay. But I'm just talking about the work part of it. It's just.
Sure.
Video space.
Yeah, if you had, you had a building on your property and you wanted to make pottery in it, that's, that doesn't fall under our purview at all.
Right, and neither would if he's a musician and he wants to play music out there, because that's his thing. It's the same.
He can play music anywhere he wants, but once, once you make it a living space.
Right.
That's a different aspect.
Right, I understand. Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
And I didn't get the tag end of your email. It's Sarah Zick.
Gmail dot com.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll see you Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
You know what time?
Yeah. Bye.
Bye.
So I guess technically we are continuing a hearing that began, I don't know, last century. Um, and I I was in receipt, and I believe that Mary is in receipt because it was sent to zba@whately.org as well. Um, a, an email from Stephen J. Herbert withdrawing without prejudice. Um, the application for the establishing of marijuana cultivation on land at State Road Map thirty-two, Lot six in Whately. So since it has officially been sent to us, all that remains for us, the three of us that were hearing the case, Kristen, Deborah, and I, is to vote to accept the withdrawal without prejudice. Can someone move that?
I move it.
Okay, is there a second? Great, I vote yes to accept.
I need to think about it. No, yes, absolutely.
Kristen?
Kristen, you're muted. I think we have to hear you. Kristen, unmute?
I vote yes. I don't know why that keeps muting. It just keeps automatically muting me.
Remnant. Okay, so Mary, that is officially accepted, um, that withdrawn without prejudice, and we are done with that issue.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Who moved it? Who moved and who seconded on this thing?
Uh, I, I moved, and Kristen seconded.
Okay. Thank you.
And you do have a copy of that, Mary?
I do.
It's, yeah, it was dated May twenty-sixth.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Hey, are, are we done?
We are done.
Okay, yeah, oh, Mr. Beshda.
I have just one quick question. I just want to thank the board for listening to my questions and concerns this evening.
Absolutely.
Have a good night.
We're always happy when citizens come.
That's the big bucks.
Okay, Bob.
Okay.
Thank you.